It was just something that was floating down there. I did some research on and I never heard another word about it. So, I don't know.
Yeah, I just go, I need to know. I think there's a lot of stuff. I don't know, maybe from the oil. Yeah.
Yeah. I definitely. It was just something that was floating down there. I did some research on and I've never heard another word about it. So, I don't know.
Yeah, I just go, I need to know. I think there's a lot of stuff.
Yeah.
I don't know, maybe from the oil.
Yeah.
Sounds familiar.
Well, the oil just had, of course, the township's had one for 20 years. And then the person started getting that.
Is it like a thing that they took out of your pay?
Yeah. Like, right now where I work is in Middletown, so they have to sign up with a form and give us their address and everything. Then you have to look it up on the website, put the code in of what municipality they live in. Now, the deal is, you see now, I work in Middletown, so they're taking a whole percent out of my pay.
Right.
It stays in Middletown.
If.
Marsville.
Had one, they can transfer it to Marsville.
Goes to where you live.
Okay.
So, you know, you got away, if it's beneficial.
Right, right, right.
Let's say you live in Middletown and work in Marsville, it's a middle pair. You know, so.
Right.
And then what?
Oh, and what is that?
We haven't been telling you that was published. I don't remember. Um, no. So, I think it was published online, but.
Does it matter?
No.
Hello.
Hello.
I want to.
Hello.
Sure. You're gonna sign up? You're gonna say anything?
No, it's not.
Don't be quiet tonight. I'm sorry.
I'll see you in the chat.
I'm sorry.
Listen, Justin.
What are?
Um.
One place you don't learn is Facebook. Human capital.
Yeah, fine. Isn't it generally like, you're a hot dog.
I think so.
So, the show generally seems, I think, maybe.
I don't know.
Used to be one.
I want to hear something.
Well, I just.
I have no.
Yes, it's.
I have to.
Usually out.
Yeah, you also want to, let's be discussed for me, Jack, like, you want to.
I mean, always.
They provide us and how you know what's.
Yeah, naturally. Have to be know what was.
Okay.
I looked at his page and it wasn't.
He's slacking.
I feel his page for information, there's no information there. Oh, yeah.
Well, I think the record, are they said they were checking over that already?
That was in that story.
I think.
Yeah.
A little hard to read.
Yeah, it's tiny.
But they said they were aware of it.
Yeah.
And not being responsive. It's important.
It's important.
Not these times. I had.
I saw.
I want money from you.
I don't know.
I don't know.
I don't believe.
It's all right.
This is.
Um.
It's like 16.
Well, what they're probably like.
I mean, I still.
Oh, right.
She knows him.
Yeah.
This stuff since it's kind of.
It's.
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 So, much of the.
It's.
It's.
And then in this world.
It's.
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 Thank you.
Oh, God.
I don't know why, but.
There's.
So.
I mean, I don't have to do.
You don't have to.
I think you only have to have one.
Try to solve.
Have to.
Yeah.
Every day.
I guess.
I would be interested in what's.
It's like.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Cause we.
It's.
Cause we have this.
It's.
But I mean.
After.
You were talking to the person.
This process.
Nothing about.
I'm ready when you are.
Okay. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Marsville Borough Council Agenda Meeting of October 9th, 2018. We will begin after a pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence first. Thank you.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Could have a roll call, please, Virginia. Oh, thank you, Mike.
Councilman Bowers?
Here.
Here.
Councilman Chronicle?
Here. Here.
Councilman Day?
Yes, here.
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 Okay, thank you. Okay, I just want to let everyone know tonight that the junior councilperson position was interviewed tonight with three of the candidates with the council. So, a nomination we put up for that name, so we're going to add that to the agendas that you all know that. We decided we're going to do it in the very beginning because there's so many other things that we need to take care of. So, we'll do it at this time so that we can actually put the name up, vote on it, and then on Monday they can be here for the presentation for their swearing in. So, just to let you know. So, at this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to call to accept a nomination for the 2018-19 Junior Council position.
So moved.
Okay, can I have a nomination, please?
I'd like to nominate Garrett Foy.
Garrett, I'm sorry, Foy?
Foy, F-O-Y.
First name?
Garrett, G-A-R-R-E-T-T.
Okay, any other nominations?
Emala.
I'm sorry, student?
Emala.
Emala?
Or last name?
Last name, please.
Deleon.
That's two.
D-E.
D-E and they're.
L-E-O-N.
Emala, Delion, Delon?
Delion.
Delion, I'm sorry. Emala Delion.
E-M-A-L-A.
Okay. Any other nominations? Okay, nominations are closed then. There are two candidates, Garrett Foy and Emalia Delion. We'll do Garrett Foy first and we'll do a roll call on that, please.
Councilman Bowers?
Doesn't.
Yes.
Councilman Dryspaw?
No.
Councilman Chronicle?
Yes.
Councilman Larison?
Yes.
Councilman Day?
Yes.
Councilman Parker?
Yes.
Councilman Spinn?
Uh, yes.
And Councilman Day?
Yes.
Motion passes seven one.
I'd just like to thank all the candidates that came out. They were really great candidates. It was a really difficult decision. It was just that Garrett was a little bit more polished, but both of the other candidates were really great kids and I hope to see them at future council meetings. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay. We're also going to move up nine E from our action items to take care of this because we have another attorney also here that's going to be together with us tonight for this, in case we need this. Okay, the motion is to amend the responsible contract ordinance. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments on this motion?
Point of order, Madam President.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I believe this is. Yes, they're on for a public comment.
Oh, do the public comment?
They have a public comment before you vote on what action item?
Oh, I thought we were. Oh, we're just discussing it.
Yeah, this is, this is just for discussion tonight. This isn't for action tonight.
Oh, I'm sorry, that's me. I'm sorry, then.
And this is Matt McHugh from Obermeyer. He's your conflict counsel. He drafted the ordinance and he's here in case you have any questions, discussion, revisions for council's consideration for action on Monday.
Excuse me, Mr. Mitchell, I did not receive a copy of that ordinance?
It was in your delivery.
It was in your packet, everyone got it.
Did you get a copy of that? Mr. Nay also did not receive a copy of that.
That was in the packet?
Yes.
Okay, well, we, we'll send it out to you, you have till next week, but it was in your packet, it was sent out.
Yeah, it was in the packet last week.
Were you able to give me which date that was?
I don't remember if it was Wednesday or Friday, but.
Wednesday, yeah, it was at least a week ago, yeah.
Third.
And I know you got it before this agenda came out, so I would have thought you would have questioned it, how you not gotten it. And I'm sorry for that mistake, everyone. I'll go back to public comment.
Madam President, if it's not a voting item, a motion for second, your attorney can tell you how.
We don't need a motion.
Can we?
We're just discussing.
Nine twenty-eight.
Okay, do you want me to pull the motion back?
No, you're not, there's no.
Right, and this is scheduled for a public hearing. It's been duly advertised.
There's a public hearing next.
For a public hearing next week at the normal meeting of councils. So, at that time, we will do the normal public hearing process and then council can consider the amendment at that time.
Okay, thank you. That was my mistake. Thank you very much.
Yeah, Matt is here to answer any questions you have about it or any edits or.
That you want to do for.
Questions or revisions because he drafted it for you.
Do you want me to do that after the public comment? Let them do that first?
Do what?
He's here, so let him.
Hey, he's here, you may as well.
All right.
If we have questions, we should let them fly.
If there's no questions or comments, I'm just available.
Okay, I'm sorry.
No, no, not a problem.
All right.
My only question is, I read through it and it looks like there weren't any changes from the black line that I had sent to Scott and forwarded to you, I believe.
Correct. I was provided with a black line of the codified ordinance from which I based the amendment off of, on the direction from Mr. Mitchell. So, if that's what you're referring to, yeah, it's identical to, just takes into ordinance form those revisions.
I'm sorry, I didn't get your name. I apologize.
Matthew McHugh. If it's helpful for council, I understand some of the members may not ever, I can just quickly go through what the actual amendments are, if that's helpful.
Sure, is that mic on? Just check and make sure the button is on there. It is, okay, good.
Sounds, yeah.
Are you in Mr. Flager's office?
No, I'm with Obermeyer, Redmond, Maxwell and Hippel, which was appointed as Borough Special Counsel, I believe, at the reorganization meeting. And we're handling this matter, I believe, I know Mr. Flager has a conflict or, that was my understanding.
Okay. Okay, if you'd like to.
Sure.
Yes, if you would, please.
Really, and the headline of the ordinance kind of explains it, there's really just three revisions here. The first is, there's a fee for a contractor's license under the chapter 164 that was originally listed in the codified ordinances at $50. That's now being replaced with, that it will be set by a resolution by, during the fee schedule, by Borough Council on an annual basis. The second part deals with the actual responsible contractor ordinance provisions and it changes the threshold amount for what, you know, what kind of, what type of contract must qualify or must look at the responsible contractor ordinance provisions. It was originally 50,000 or 25,000. It's going to be increased to 200,000 under the proposed ordinance. The third change is that the responsible contractor provisions, once you've passed that threshold, have a requirement that the responsible contractor must participate in a Class A apprenticeship program in order to meet those requirements. That requirement would be deleted. The provisions, the rest of the ordinance then kind of relates to some housekeeping measures, changing the ordinances and the language in there to reflect the additional revisions that I just suggested. So, that's just a brief overview. It's rather a short ordinance, only two pages.
Thank you.
We received that on the 29th of September.
Yes, thank you.
Bren, did you see that? You were trying to look it up?
I haven't had a chance. I've actually just been looking at the copy that Virginia handed to me and I apologize if you went over this. It says section two, section eight basically is being deleted, subsection C in its entirety.
Subsection C, that's, it's a purpose section. It's, subsection eight is the purposes of the responsible contract ordinance and that reference there refers to the Class A apprenticeship program. Since that requirement would be deleted under the next section of the ordinance, that purpose section is inapplicable.
If I may, since the dollar amount is being raised from 25,000 to 200,000, is it necessary to remove the apprenticeship ordinance portion of that?
Well, I think that's a policy decision for Borough Council, but it's still a requirement. So, any contract over $200,000 would, you know, would then also, generally the apprenticeship program would then, would then apply. So, then.
It would apply for over.
But now, no, but now that if you amend it, you would not have that requirement at all. But there are other requirements that go along with responsible contract provision other than apprenticeship programs that apply for contracts over 200,000.
Yeah, that was my understanding, that once we raise the dollar threshold, that the apprenticeship program would still be in place.
No.
Why would you think that we didn't even discuss? This was the problem last month. I don't even know where these came from.
Okay. I thought that was the purpose of raising the dollar amount, to make it open to people that are not unionized, basically.
Yeah, all, this was all done through the Policy Committee. This information was given to everybody and the changes were on there. No one contacted about any thing they had to discuss about it ahead of time, said the reasoning for it. That's why everyone got that, but yes, those are the changes are on there. Have to remember too, our engineering firm has a construction observer on any site construction project, including even this small playground one that's not as much money, to monitor the work, so the quality of work is always assured. So, that's just my personal take on that.
Yeah, and just so, just so council's aware, the responsible or the Class A apprenticeship program requirement is one of, I think, 14 certifications that a responsible contractor has to make under the current ordinance. So, deleting it, there's still another 13 certifications that are made that only apply to contracts over the threshold amount.
Correct. Anyone else? Any other questions about it? Corinne, I'll make sure the manager has that sent back out to you, if it's not in your packet or check your one for the 29th, you said, Mike, because when that went out?
29th of September, yes.
That you have that?
Actually, it's the 28th. Delivery of the 28th.
Delivery of the 28th?
Uh huh.
So, whatever other questions you would want or you have a problem with that between now and next week, please ask them. But everyone did get this information, plenty of time for this.
Well, I don't know what, I mean, we never discussed this. This has never, ever, ever been discussed. If this was in some sort of minutes from the Policy Committee.
It was.
I didn't see any sort of specificity with these, these particular things being removed. And I also don't know, as far as last month, Mr. Flager's office was going to be doing this, so I'm not even sure, with all due respect to Mr. McHugh, I don't even know why he was given this to do.
Mr. Flager contacted me and asked to be excused. He has a conflict and if we would have Conflict Counsel do it, which is what we did.
I don't think it's going on around here anymore.
The amendments that Matt drafted go back a couple of months, I think, to.
They do.
Policy Committee.
Yes.
Or two Policy Committee meetings.
And they were in the minutes that they submitted to everyone too. So, if you look back on the minutes that were submitted to everyone from the Policy Committee, it states in there exactly what those changes were. There was also given by Mr. Bowers a copy of the original ordinance and one of the changes where it was actually marked out, what one was being taken out of that before it was submitted.
These are minutes that were in our packets.
Yes.
Yes.
I believe the Policy Committee meeting, that was several months ago.
Mm-hmm.
I don't recall the date.
Mm-hmm, they've had a couple of them. Because I know they were going back and forth with this one and another.
Well, Matt is here tonight to hear from you and answer any questions, provide clarity and will make any changes council wishes to make in time for Monday's meeting. I was not going to ask him to also attend Monday's meeting. I was hoping we could exhaust whatever questions you might have tonight, unless, of course, council would like him to come back. We can, we can have him come back Monday, but that's up to you.
Can we reduce the amount from 200 to at least 100,000? That's a huge jump. That's almost 10 times the amount. My concern is always that this is, these are, these are things that will be on public property. This is property for our residents and basically we're required to take the lowest.
Responsible bidder, yes.
Bid, yes, excuse me, yes, lowest bid. So, these are just put in place to make sure that we have extra safeguards. So, to go from 25,000 to 200,000 just seems like a huge jump to me. I mean, is there any way we could just bring that down to 100,000?
I would like to ask if anybody can address how a Class A apprenticeship program is a safeguard and if it is why we haven't instituted it in the borough to get the borough workers trained at that same level so we're safe.
Is that a no to bring it down to 100,000?
No.
I don't know what the purpose of that would be. The idea would be to open that up more to other contractors to be able to be part of it, correct? That's what I'm taking it to be.
Why don't we, Mr. Obermeyer?
McHugh, would that be the reasoning for raising that threshold so that it opens it up for other contractors to be able to bid?
Right, well, it makes it so that they don't have, I mean, certainly sometimes the certifications, as I indicated, there's 13 or 14 of those. And then there's a public review process and the Borough Engineers Review. It's a much more rigorous process under the RCO. So, if you have a threshold that is obviously higher and smaller projects, then would allow for potentially people who are unable to meet the provisions of the RCO or unable to go through the time sent, you know, if the project is of a smaller nature, it may be time sensitive. You may not want to open it up to such a lengthy review process.
Right, right.
Shop local.
Mr. McHugh, just, sorry to be so redundant.
No.
It might understand we're removing the apprenticeship requirement completely.
Correct, no, the, correct. It only applied previously to contracts that were over $25,000 for public works type projects.
So, if it's being removed completely, why do we need the threshold increase?
Because there are 13 other requirements that we are not deleting. It's one requirement out of 13 or 14 that we're removing.
Right. And I also indicated, there's also a public, when you hit the responsible contractor threshold under your current ordinance, there's also a 21-day public review period. So, there's some additional, you know, considerations there that, when you meet that threshold, are going to apply to those types of contracts.
Okay, thank you.
Well, certainly, the apprenticeship program is an aspect of it. There are other considerations. I'd just like to point out that I do work for an agency that has a responsible contractor's provisions in their contracts, but there is no apprenticeship program and they successfully bid out projects to both union firms and non-union firms.
Is there a dollar amount?
I don't know offhand.
Okay. And I'd like to also point out that the school nor the MMA have that requirement. And I'd like to also point out that the school nor the MMA have that requirement.
Well, the borough has property all over the borough. I don't know that school does. I don't know why you'd want to poke holes again. I think these are very important safeguards, so.
When you have 13 other provisions that double-check what the contractors are doing along with having your engineer who's qualified and has to be at the job site, why they're doing this stuff, you don't think that's coverage?
No, I don't know why you'd remove any. I would want the top tier every time. I don't know why you'd want to poke holes in these requirements.
I have a question.
Sure.
So the other 13 safeguards don't take effect till it reaches the threshold of 200,000, right?
That's correct.
So then, for everything under that, those safeguards don't apply?
Those particular ones. You'd still have to award it to the lowest responsible bidder.
So again, just for the public's knowledge, that's going from 25,000 to 200,000, or, excuse me, yes. So again, I think that that's an enormous jump, and that will basically envelop 99% of what we would do.
I think we've seen at the last meeting where our bids came in for basically the equivalent of half to three-quarters of a street at, how much were they, Scott?
185. It's on your packet tonight for a vote, actually.
For the rotary paving?
Yes.
Don't know if I have.
185,913, 13 cents.
So, in my estimation, it's a relatively small project. It's not even a whole street being paved, and we're nearing that cap.
It's two sections of two streets. It's not an entire street. And it's 185,913 dollars.
And did we have a hard time getting that?
Yes, we put it out twice for bid to try and get someone to take that. The problem with our playground was that we actually own a timeframe on that to get that done because it's CDBG money, so it has to be spent down by April. And we've lost two bids on that already. So we're not rebidding that back out until we make some adjustments.
And the reason for the loss of those bids was because of the apprenticeship program, correct?
Correct, yeah, that's one they can't meet.
And I think for something as important as a tot lot or anything that our residents, including our youngest residents, we should have, again, those safeguards in place.
Can somebody please explain to me how that's a safeguard?
Well, then, Corinne, then you were going to be sending back that money because we can't get a contractor to meet that for that small project. So how do you want to get that tot lot in now that you got the money?
I'm not here to, that's not the point. The point is that, again, you're weakening what is in the ordinance to protect our residents for this one project.
How is it protecting residents, please?
Our engineer's going to be on that site.
Yeah.
That's whoever sees whatever they're doing, and it's not going to allow them to do anything they shouldn't be doing.
Why was it put in in the first place? We really didn't need it when it was put in.
Anyone else have any questions to ask Mr. McQ? Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, brother.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Matt, we have wonderful restaurants in Morrisville. You might want to try one out.
I'll check them out.
They're really good.
Thanks, thanks for coming out.
Thank you, everyone.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, all right.
Do we wish to leave this on the agenda? And do we have any revisions we wish to make, or no?
I'll ask the Council, is there any revisions to this that you want?
I have none.
Anyone?
Well, I mean, I asked for it to be lowered, but that's apparently not going to happen, so.
Anyone else want it lowered? No. You do, two? Two want it lowered? Speak into your microphone.
My only concern was the apprenticeship component being completely removed.
But you're okay with the 13 other parts of that for protection on it?
What are they? What are those 13 other parts, you know?
It's in the ordinance.
Okay.
I have the ordinance on me. You want to say it? It's up to you.
Well, I'll study it. I'll study it on my own. Thank you.
Okay. All right, so there's no revisions? Okay, thank you. Thank you very much for coming out. Yes, we're going to do the public comment.
Do the announcements and presentations, Corinne?
Yeah, yeah, we're all over the place. Okay, I'll just go over the announcements and the presentations first before the public comment. And I'm so sorry, I made a mistake on that in the beginning. One will be the A, 4A is the Rotary Club 90th Anniversary Presentation. There'll be a certificate of appreciation from the borough. And I believe picture frames, right? That'll be done on Monday. We will also do the swearing-in of the junior council person will be added at that time for Monday, and we will also.
4C?
A, B, C.
4A will be the Rotary Club. 4B will be the swearing-in of the junior council person. 4C, you're going to hear tonight. It won't be repeated. And 4D will be a public hearing on the amendments to the RCO.
Okay, so 4.
And while we're on the subject of item 4, related to 4A, our staff took the liberty, we weren't sure what all was happening with this Rotary Club presentation, so our staff took the liberty of drafting a proclamation from the council president and the mayor, a draft of which is in your folders on the dais this evening. Someone is going to have to fact-check this because we have no idea if this information is accurate.
I looked at it, it's accurate.
We basically stole it from the internet. So if the Rotary Club is involved in all of these things, great, but we don't want to, you know, put something out there that's totally inaccurate. So if somebody affiliated with the Rotary.
It's good.
Can I make a minor, can I make a minor request change? Is there any way we could have the junior council person be 4A in case his parents come for pictures and things like that, and then he can be seated for the duration of the meeting?
You want them to be A?
Is that, would that be okay?
Yeah, I don't care. You want that to be 4A?
Is that, if that doesn't throw off?
4A will be swearing-in of the junior council person. 4B will be the Rotary Club presentation.
And 4C is?
4C is your hearing tonight, unless you have questions about it Monday. And 4D will be the public hearing on the amendments to the RCO that were just discussed.
Okay.
I found a boo-boo.
Okay, so I guess at this time, I'm going to open up, oh, do you want to go over the 4C?
Yeah, do you want to hear the budget presentation now or after public comment? It's up to you.
It's up to you, want to do public comment? It doesn't matter to me. You have it under presentations, that's all I'm asking.
Do public comment first.
Do public comment, okay. Okay, we'll do public comment. Holly Harmon, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. There's a three-minute time limit for your comment. Thank you.
Hi, Holly Harmon, Hillside Avenue. Thank you for revising that ordinance. I hope it goes through. I don't want to lose this grant money for the tot lot. It's been pretty bare down there for the last year or so, so it'd be great to have some equipment installed. Secondly, I know it's budget season. I know that you have some hard choices to make. But ultimately, I think where you have to go with this is to maintain our cap and not, I don't want to take another day off to drive to Doylestown for not. So I appreciate it if you have to make those hard choices, but I think the bottom line is the taxpayer. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is, I'm not sure, is it Julia? Julia Gambard? Gambach?
Gambach.
Gambach? Couldn't understand you right. Thank you. Please state your name and address for the record, please. You can pull that down a little bit, she can, I think you can tip it forward a little bit.
I'm Julia Gambach, Crown Street. I, I'm, won't take too long. I'm nervous. I don't usually do public speaking. First of all, I miss the chief at these meetings. And some of you know that because I've expressed that privately. What I'm asking you respectfully is to have the chief here to discuss the budget when it comes to any cuts that you plan to make for the Police Department. I think there are a lot of community members that are concerned, basically for safety reasons. And I think that you would do justice letting people hear him and what he has to say, and answer any questions from the community. If you're going to do cuts, I think we need to know how that's going to affect us. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sure, go ahead.
Just so you're aware, the police chief is usually at the council meetings, but he's actually out of town at a police chief's event.
He's here, but he doesn't, he used to stand here and.
They give written reports.
Yeah, well, I'd like to see him be able to use his voice and to explain things to us when necessary. I know he's here, but I've never seen him at the mic for many, many months now.
Okay, thank you. John Pastore, state your name and address for the record, please.
John Pastore, Dieter Avenue. I would highly suggest that we leave that, whatever you call it, the apprenticeship program for the over $200,000. You're going to open yourself up to a liability with bonding insurance, and in the end result, the taxpayers are going to pay.
Okay. Thank you.
How are we making out with code enforcement? I haven't heard anything for months. It was a what?
Yeah, go ahead. Well, say what you need to say, and we can comment afterwards. But yeah, okay, you're asking about it. There's a report constantly given, and you can get it from the Borough Hall. It's posted on the internet.
I didn't know.
Council people put it up. There's a full report every month we put out there on what they're doing, so.
Okay.
Yeah, and the manager will be glad to give it to you. I might even have a copy tonight. I'll give it to you after the meeting. You can have it.
Great.
Okay.
Yeah, John, if you want to call the office, we'll set a copy aside for you.
Yeah, I had no idea.
Yeah, there's.
There's never any of the special agendas, so I don't know what yous are talking about.
Yeah, the agendas for the agenda meetings, there really isn't one. This is a draft agenda for Monday night's public meeting.
Past two months, they haven't been out. We haven't been able to have a copy.
Yeah, that's because we usually make about 600 changes to those before, before the end of the night, so.
Right here. There you go.
Oh, there's a copy. There you go. That's the code enforcement report.
That's code enforcement.
Yeah, there's a report done monthly, so if you'd ever like a copy, it's public record. Just call the office and we'll set one aside for you.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome. Next, Kurt Holtenricks? State your name and address for the record, please.
Evening, Kurt Holtenricks, 300 Melvin Court. See, on your agenda for the budget preliminary, I'm glad you're getting to it already this early. Usually it goes till end of December with the previous couple managers, and it's a real nightmare. I applaud you for tackling it, knowing the shortcomings that you came into this year with, the under-reporting of expenses and revenues, $100,000 taken from liquid funds and never put back and not really done correctly. That's why there's a shortfall with things. And I have confidence that things are going to be taken care of and hopefully not a major tax increase, if anything at all. Rumors of a earned income tax being kicked around for some reason. I hope that doesn't get very far in discussion. It'll be another nail in a coffin for a town that is already looked at as being overtaxed as it is. And it will impact people moving here, people wanting to move out of here sooner. And it will not sit well as far as property values and really driving people in or out of this town. It wouldn't be a good thing for that. So I'm glad you guys are getting the budget taken care of early. Look forward to seeing where it goes and hoping that it is not too bad. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Tom Wisniewski, please state your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, Tom Wisniewski, 815 Crown Street. Thanks for letting me sign up late. I really appreciate it. Budget time is the worst time for you all, and I know that firsthand. It's a tough job, and we are in a tough situation here in Morrisville. We have been for many, many, many years. But you all signed up to make some really tough decisions. That's what you asked us to do. You said, please, let us have this responsibility, and we're going to take care of it, you. We're going to handle, we're going to take care of the borough. We're going to do what's in the best interest of the borough. And I'm really concerned about the proposed cuts in our Police Department. Yes, the taxpayers absolutely have to come first. Of course we do. And I don't want a tax increase. No one wants a tax increase, believe me. But option B, slashing our Police Department virtually in half, is not in the best interest of Morrisville Borough. Many of us have been working for decades, including you, to try and lift ourselves up by our bootstraps, trying to improve our town, trying to make our town more attractive to businesses, more attractive to residents, more attractive to people with small children, more attractive across the board. The foundation of that is public safety. If this is not a safe town, none of that other stuff matters because no one will want to live here, no one will want to work here, no one will want to open their businesses here, no one will want to come here to our fine restaurants that our solicitor mentioned. No one's going to want their kids here if our town is not safe. We live, you know where we live, you know what's right over there, one of the worst crime-ridden cities in America. The only way to keep that crime away from us, to keep it out of here, is with a strong police presence and not a part-time police force. That will, that will not work. The only way to keep the drug traffic out of here, to keep the gangs out of here, is by applying constant pressure from people who work here full-time, are invested here, and have a vested interest in the public safety. It's been my experience that part-time police officers, part-time officers are great, and they're a necessary part of our law enforcement here. But part-time police officers come and go. They're not invested here. Some of them are. Some of them are wonderful. I know a bunch of them. I'm not trying to make too many generalities here. But it's not a way to run a Police Department. So I encourage you.
Thank you.
To, am I?
No, she just had her long enough. I'm just, go ahead.
Time was up.
I was wanting.
I just want to encourage you to, boy, everybody wants to say, well, make a difficult decision somewhere else. And after a while, I understand that you run out of somewhere else. I completely get that. But taking apart the police force, that's the wrong approach. And it would be, it would be a terrible thing for Morrisville. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you very much. Council, I don't know if you want to say anything at this time, or you want Borough official comment time to comment on it?
Are you going into the budget?
Yeah, I'm going to close public comment at this time, then. Okay. Yeah, we'll go into, it's now going to be 4C, correct? Am I getting that right? We'll be now. be now, we're going to talk about the preliminary budget or...
4C, yes.
See if anyone has any...
4C, the proposed budget.
Okay, if anyone wants to say anything at this time. You're just receiving this actually tonight, the full part of it. You only got part of it to this point and A and B options. This is the actual number draft that you're getting, so everyone needs to take a look at that this week.
Well, let me give you a couple of disclaimers before Mr. Heights gets started. This is proposed. It's for discussion. The final will not be adopted until December, just like every year. This is modeled based on 30 mills within the state millage cap. And this is based on known quantities to us, but this is not carved in stone. This is going to evolve. This is if everyone and every department got everything they wanted, and clearly that will not be the case. So with that said, don't throw rocks at the guy, but take it away.
Micah, can I suggest you grab the mic up there?
Does it come off of there? Uh, thanks.
All right, as Borough Manager said, this is definitely not set in stone. This is just like the first top-level one we sent out to council. This is for review and discussion. As I said, we spent, I don't know how many days, locked downstairs in the conference rooms, going over, taking notes, looking at previous years, making assumptions. As the Borough Manager said, we are not increasing taxes, but we are bringing down to what actually can be collected and not to balance the budget. This one is not balanced because we don't think, we're not going to put revenues there that aren't, don't exist. So with that said, fire away, I guess. Just no stones.
So if I may?
Sure.
I'm looking specifically at the general fund. Looks like you're expecting about $200,000 less this year than we had in our budget for last year, just in the general fund, correct? We were at 4.6% last year, if I'm not mistaken. I don't have it in front of me.
You're correct.
We're at 4.4% this year.
Well, we're projecting that number for 2019, yes.
Yep. So what you're telling us is that's reasonably, you're actually expecting. There's no padding in that. There's nothing in that, is what I'm hearing. So then, I guess, as I'm looking at these things and I'm seeing specific increases of like 16% in the police budget. I understand that there's pay raises and if nothing changes, those would occur. What would justify a 16% increase in the police budget from last year to this year?
Well, not speaking for the chief himself, and I'll let the Borough Manager add on to what I'm going to say, but there are not only the percent increase, but there are step increases through the police department. That's in there. And as the Borough Manager said, there's a wish list. There are a few things that are going to be coming up, and I think the chief said this before. Some of the safety gear that they have is, like anything else, have a time limit to it. I believe the safety vest, or whatever term you want to use, bulletproof vests, I think have a five-year, and they're coming up. So we want to start planning. We don't want to buy all 2015 at once. We want to start projecting that, as well as the body cameras that they have. We can go, there's more detail, and I'll let the chief speak to that, but those are some of the larger line items.
Micah, where is your salary in this? I'm not seeing Finance Director in here.
Just like all the administration, it is spread out over the funds.
So you don't have, there's not a line item for you? Because there's a line item for the Borough Manager and...
The line item for the Borough Manager is also spread out over the funds.
Right. So you don't have, you don't have any?
There's no one line item. I work with sanitation. I work with Public Works. I work through the administration. I do not work on the shade trees, though. Just to let you know that.
Can I ask why for the administrative, last year it was $742,000 and this year it's 1.3 million?
You may ask because we are, well, we were hoping to set some reserves aside for the borough, which will certainly not be possible. So the 1.364 million you're looking at includes 10% of revenues set aside for the borough. That will not obviously be able to happen.
That was on our wish list.
Yes.
So, Micah, by what you just said, I wouldn't say cover your ears, but if we were to no longer need your services, that doesn't 100% come out of the general fund? Do you know what percentage does?
No, I do not at this time.
Actually, you could refer to the Manning table that was distributed at the last meeting. It shows all borough personnel and their salaries. I don't think it, no, it does not show what funds personnel are spread over, but it does list every position within the borough government.
If we could get that, that would be fantastic because that is one thing that I don't think I've ever seen. No, that I've seen. What I'm saying is like where the, where each person is pulling from, like what percentage of their salary is coming from what...
Yeah, we can give you a breakdown of that. I mean, even my position is subsidized by the water fund and spread out over several funds, so it's not entirely the borough taxpayer who pays my salary.
I do have more comment. One of, in the general fund, the one that's probably locked down as tight as it can be and as accurate can be is the sanitation. I don't foresee that changing too much.
And that's actually the last page in the budget packet you were handed out tonight, and that should look familiar because the same chart was shown to you last month about how we keep the sanitation fund self-sufficient and not a financial drain on the general fund.
Yep.
So the increase to the sanitation is the increase in the cost of the contract for Republic, correct?
Well, as we said before when we introduced this, it is not just a contract, and that's the issue we've had in the past. There's other things that go within the sanitation budget, not just the actual contract.
Yeah, you have internal personnel as well.
Administration, yeah.
But it's largely driven by the contract.
Correct.
As far as the revenue projections, that's something also, as we restated, the previous manager stated quite a few areas that were overstated on the revenues, and that's one of them. I think he stated last year it was going to be somewhere around $200,000 they were expecting to pull in, and I don't know that we're going to come near that. I think we're maybe at about half. So that's one of the areas that we have a problem with that's overstating. I guess that's going to be hard to project on what we would get.
Yeah, I think you're referring to the bad debt collection on sanitation. I think we're at like $93,000 for the year and the budget had projected $200,000.
Yeah.
So that's obviously a big shortfall.
So yes, it's not going to be that high again, and we're working with Portnoy to see what's out there, what is reasonable and what has gone to legal, you know, what steps, and we're going to take that into consideration as well.
Okay.
Well, we know you're just seeing this tonight for the first time, and that's probably why you're so quiet.
Yes.
But if you have questions tonight, we will attempt to address them. If you think of questions in the next couple of days, you can email them to me or we can discuss them further Monday night.
I do have one more quick question here because this is a big one for the general fund. We get $650,000 from the MMA, but we're budgeting $775,000 in expenses?
Well, we are projecting $775,582 in expenses in 2019 related to water. But yes, the revenue is locked per the service agreement at $650,000. In fact, I think your expense figure for water for the current year budget, 2018, was also in excess of
It was.
what the revenue is. I'm not sure of the reasoning for that, but that's the same case projected for 2019 and then some.
Is there any wish list items that are coming out of this? Because certainly we can't work upside down on that.
Of course. Well, you know, we will be drilling down on each department's budget, including Public Works, as we go through this process the next couple of months. And I expect that number is going to move downward.
Okay.
I have a quick question. It looks like we budgeted $35,000 for engineering services and we spent about $145,000.
Correct.
But we're only budgeting $50,000 for 2019.
Correct.
Don't you think that's not going to work?
We inherited stuff that wasn't budgeted for this year that was already in process last year.
Yes.
That we won't have next year.
Right. Plus, I would remind counsel that earlier this year, you consciously made the decision, and I agreed as well, to be particularly aggressive in the application of grants for various capital improvement projects. So we collectively made the decision to blow the budget on that line item. Whether that will be the case next year or not is a policy decision that you'll need to make. My recommendation will probably be, when I'm prepared to make one, that we focus perhaps on three specific grant programs next year and only do three applications. But I'm not prepared, as I sit here today, to make that suggestion. But yes, your point is well-taken. And in fact, if I do a five-year look back on engineering and some other areas, the borough has routinely exceeded those line items in the past.
And if I can, the only thing I'll say about the engineering cost also, the amount that we spent on the engineering, part of it was unfunded stuff that was not put in for grants that were already in the process from the year before and the previous manager did not compensate for the engineering that would be needed to process and close out those grants. So you would have lost that money for what was already given to the borough for Patriots Park and for some other projects. So it was already in the works and for what you spent on that and the hundreds of thousands of dollars that we have gotten in outweighs that. Patriots Park alone was at almost $600,000 in revenue that we got just to buy it, take the building down, and then after that, we now just received an $85,000 grant to actually put the plan together for the architect plan, as well as a $230,000 grant yet to be spent down to do the sidewalks and ADA compliance for there. So that's where that came from. But part of that expense for that engineer was just costs that came in from the previous manager, not allotting for what you needed to do to finish those grants out. And we had no choice, but we had to get that done. So I'll just state that about that.
I believe we did caution counsel back in January or February about the fact that nothing was included in the 18 budget for engineering and inspection work on the MR Rider demolition project.
So at this point, I believe the three we're talking about have to do with the projects that are already in the works and we're not going to exceed past that, but we will probably submit, resubmit a couple of them back in that already have their paperwork drawn up for that. Anyone else? Or you, it's kind of tough when you're just getting this tonight to actually, I'd like to look over the numbers really well. I'm sure you'll be getting messages back and forth with questions as to what we're saying.
Emails owe plenty.
Yeah.
Scott, in regards to the MMA $650,000, our Public Works workers, I assume, get some sort of increase in their salary due to the contract next year?
Well, all borough employees that are covered by the APSME agreement will receive, just as they did this year, their 3% salary adjustment, yes.
Okay, so we have administrative people who salaries, Public Works salaries are increasing, and I'm assuming healthcare costs are probably going up, right?
15% a year. I think there was a year we got lucky and it was around 10, but...
I think this year's about 15.
Yeah, we're projecting 15% increase in healthcare costs this year.
So would it be fair of us to ask the MMA for at least a percentage increase in their agreement?
We can certainly have that discussion.
Do we need to have, sorry, do we need to have this maintenance of parking meter still in the budget?
No, that'll come out.
No, but we'll probably have some costs associated with removing them and putting up new signs.
New signs, yeah.
Okay, so we'll leave that there? Okay.
I don't think we're going to need that whole figure, but we just decided to leave it as a space saver for right now.
Yeah, once the meters come out, then you have to put the signage up there for that ordinance you're about to vote on to designate the parking area in the commercial district. Otherwise, you can't enforce it, what you're putting in.
I have another request for our future drafts. Can we get a column with dollar change between the two years, as well as percentage, and also some page numbers, so that as we bounce back and forth, we can reference easier?
I think we can work on that.
And I'll touch...
He's nice. I would have said no, but...
I'll touch base on one more thing. I know I said it to you, Scott, but just so Micah can hear it as well. Looks like the one, two, third page, under total revenues, refund of prior year expenditures, $650,000. I think this was actually left in there from last year when the MMA prepaid and it was then pulled out. Otherwise, I don't know what the $650 refund is. That would have been from the beginning or the end of last year when MMA prepaid 600, or prepaid something. It wasn't $650,000, but I see a line, I see an amount in there that just doesn't make sense.
Can you give me the GL number? 01395.
And I know this is just a draft, so it may just not be, it may not look right.
We'll look at it.
Yep. Just to put it out there.
Okay. Yeah, the format's definitely a little different than we're used to seeing. A little easier to read, but to decipher it. The only thing I'll say with the budget, I will agree with everyone, it's not an easy process. Our job is to provide the services as well as hold the taxes as well as we can. It's not an easy process for anybody. I think we've all been contemplating these numbers over and over and over and over again. We have so much money we can work with and previous budgets have just been Robin Peter to PayPal for a long time. And it's definitely come to a head over the last couple of years. One of the biggest ones was moving a voucher back and forth in revenues where it shouldn't have been and trying to decipher all that out, over projecting on revenues, under projecting on your expenses. All that's going to come to a head, and that's where we are. And everyone knows that we need the police department. Everyone knows that. And we need to provide that service. It's just how we pay for it and how we go about doing that. And so that's our task to work on that. But it's not an easy process for anyone up here, as well as the residents that are waiting for us to make those decisions.
If I may, I'm going to present. So, and I'd just like to say something along those same lines and just kind of show everybody the scribble and dog-eared paper that I have in front of me, not because I'm messy and I don't take care of stuff, but because I'm writing, rewriting, scratching out, trying to figure it out, doing all the math, doing all the guerrilla math that I call, that I call it, that I possibly can. And it's ugly. I mean, I look at this budget and I really want to say, I see there's cameras here, I want to say, "Am I being punked?" Because this is like so far off, I don't even know what, where to begin. Maybe a, I don't know, maybe a GoFundMe. I don't know, but I do hear people saying that, you know, maybe an EIT is the answer, and I've actually had people say to me directly that, "Well, you're not doing it because it's political suicide." And the truth of it is, you know, we represent a lot of people in this town. Not just, I don't just represent my own interests. I don't just represent the people that I know personally's interest. I represent the interest of everyone. know personally's interest, I represent the interest of everyone. To the best of my ability, at least. And that includes 7.1% of the population that's at or under the poverty line in this town, that can't afford any increase in their taxes, they just can't. When I look at the stats for what women make, the median income, annual income for women in this town is about $29,000. After taxes, they're taking home about $19,000. And at the end of the day, a family of three, so a mother and two children, and I happen to know one that lost her husband this year, that's under the poverty line for them. They can't afford a tax increase. There's an amazing woman I talk to once in a while in Lynn Court. She was in tears because of the increase from the school. She can't afford it. She lost her husband a couple of years after they bought their house, and she can't afford any more tax increases. I gotta represent her, too. Not just a handful of people that I know or just a handful of people that have a loud voice. I gotta remember that there's people out there that just can't afford it. Whether I can or not isn't important. They just can't afford it. And those folks need a voice in this town as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else want to weigh in on this at this point? Okay. I suggest everyone take this home, read it over and over and over, crunch those numbers from last year to this year. Make sure you ask those questions if you need to meet with the finance director and Scott at any point to personally get those questions answered. I suggest that you do that, and I'm sure they will afford the time for you. Sometimes it takes a little lengthier time, especially new people on the council that's the first time around on this budget, and it's a lot to decipher. So I urge you to ask those questions or meet with the manager to get those questions answered also, if you need a lengthier time to do that. Okay. All right, we're gonna move on at this point. Okay, so we have the approval of the minutes. I believe everyone got these in your packet. If you did not, make sure that you contact the office to let them know that you need that resubmitted to you. I haven't heard anybody that didn't get them. You also, under Finance, you'll get your Finance Report, which is the running budget that you get every month, your financials. Make sure you look at that, and it'll give you a pretty good idea of where we are as far as our monies at this point. Also, if you have any questions about that, please ask about it. After that, we will do the motion for the bill list and to pay the bills. After that, we'll come the reports. Say, okay, under the action items, we'll go down to that. If anybody has any questions, I'll go through these ones. 9A is going to be the Halloween policy that we put in for every year. I'll read it on Monday night. I don't think it's necessary to read tonight, it's a standard one that we put out for the safety for the children. I don't think anybody have any question about that, it's a standard one, for some new people. You did get this in your packet, in case you didn't, please ask for it. 9B, on the action items, is a call for the motion for the Marshville Borough cosponsoring of the Friends of the Marshville Dog Park Monster March Halloween Parade. And Justin, you might be able to weigh in a little bit on that, you're part of that each year, and maybe explain a little bit what they do.
Basically, it's a Halloween parade for dogs. Friends of the Dog Park have judges and prizes for, I think there's four different categories for the costumes. It's being held outside the dog park on the open space plot, just south between the dog park and Delmore Avenue. And unfortunately, I don't have the date, I think it's...
October 21st. Rain date is November 3rd. On October 21st, it's from 1:00 to 2:00, 3 o'clock.
So anybody's welcome to come and register.
Anyone that attended that last year, I went, there were a few of the council people that went there, a few of the council actually put their dogs in there, the mayor's wife was there also, as one of the judges, as a matter of fact. It was tons of fun, and I was surprised at how many people had come there with their dogs, and it was an amazing sight to see. My dog wouldn't have behaved that well, but they had a really good time. So if you have a chance, go down and take a look at that, it's pretty funny. Okay. The next one, action item would be 9C. It's a motion to adopt the ordinance establishing the parking regulations for the Marshville Commercial District. The commercial district would be on Bridge Street between Pennsylvania Ave. and Delmore Ave. And we propose a two-hour parking limit after taking down the meters that have not been able to be certified and work properly in quite a few years. We have quite a bit of problem with them, so we've decided, the council, to remove them and then just put signage up there and put the parking. Ms. Chronicle, I believe, had spoke with some of the business owners down there, and that's why we came up with that amount of a two-hour, was because she asked them what they would prefer, they know their clients, how long they're there for haircuts or whatever they need to have done, and they were asking the council to put in a two-hour time limit on that. So that's what that ordinance is about, that we'll be voting on. Anyone have any questions about that? Everyone's okay with what they got on that? You got all the ordinances? Okay. The next one is 9D, is a call for a motion to approve the emergency operation plan. This past week, several council members did meet with the Emergency Management Coordinator, Chief McClay, and the Fire Chief, Matt Whedon-Hafer, to get any of their questions answered. I asked the council at the last meeting if there was any of them, so we could finally get this voted on, if they had any questions that they needed to have confirmed with the chief. And he was kind enough to oblige that and brought Matt along to sit down and answer all their questions. I believe everything has been answered for everyone at this time. And so we have it back on the agenda to hopefully get this finally voted on. Is there anyone have anything about that emergency plan that was not answered, that has any questions about it at this time? We should be all ready to go?
Uh huh.
Okay, thank you. Next one would be 9E, call for a motion to amend the response of contract ordinance. We went through what that was, that'll be coming up for the actual vote on Monday. I apologize again for not doing that in the proper format that I should have. The next one would be a call for the motion to adopt a proposed preliminary budget for 2019. 9G, we have to call for a motion to award the Plaza Boulevard and Delora Drive paving project, say the amount tonight, $185,913 and 13 cents. It's being paid for out of local fuels. This is something that went out for bid several times, and we finally do have it ready to go. And this will be a big help for Plaza Boulevard, there's like a landmine up there with the area between the shopping centers that is full of potholes out to Trent Ave., so that will finally be getting done. Anyone have any questions on that motion for that paving project? No? Okay. The last action item is call for a motion to authorize Hugh Associates to collect 2018 residential and commercial recycling data and prepare the PADEP 904 recycling grant application not to exceed $1,900. Scott, do you want to go over, this is the gentleman that came here for that recycling program, correct?
Yes, remember back in, I don't know when it was, back in the spring, it feels like it was 10 years ago, but council authorized Huff Associates to expand our data collection beyond the borough's exclusive trash collection company and to survey, get, you know, survey data other companies who haul waste from the borough. So that was for 2017. We're looking to do the same thing for 2018. Our hope is to end up netting more in recycling funds from the state than we have been. Originally, the price he quoted was $2,150. There's been a change to $1,900.
Okay, yeah.
That original amount was before I had a chance to talk to Tom.
Okay. Yeah, because I thought it was a different amount, that's why I was surprised to see that.
Yeah, well, it was a slight change in the amount. This is a continually declining source of revenue from the state, but we're hoping to get our numbers up so that we can yield a better result.
Did we receive any funds for 2017?
We have not. The projection we have is about $12,000 for 2017. Everything's been submitted to DEP, but it has not been approved or checks cut yet, and that's not unusual. It usually would be next year that we would see that payment.
Is that in one fell swoop, all the municipalities will find out at once, or...
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I do know that, I think originally when this whole thing started, we were, I think, back when it first started, I think it was around $20,000, but it's been declining every year.
State's been reducing it every year, unfortunately.
Yeah, so, but anything we can get as an added revenue is a plus, so...
So, if I may?
Yes.
Scott, did we see any improvement for the first round with these guys? I know we haven't gotten it yet, but are we seeing any potential improvement?
Well, we've seen substantial improvement in the data, obviously, because we're expanding the scope of our filing to include numbers we weren't previously capturing.
Okay.
We are and will continue to see modest increases, but...
Okay. So it's the modest increase versus the actual declines?
Yeah, they're not, they're not big numbers, so...
But if we're moving upward as opposed to declining as the offerings are...
That's the goal.
Okay, got it.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. That's all the action items. Under 10, which is the unfinished business, I spoke with the manager, everyone knows that the MMA's service agreement with the borough is expiring, it goes from year to year, so it has to be renewed. The manager has asked to get a direction from the council to allow him to speak with Mr. Rorinda about the service agreement and the fees, and get back to the council. So I would like a directive from the council to allow him to do that. Is everyone okay with directing the manager to do that? Sit down with the executive director for the MMA, which is Mr. Rorinda, and start this conversation about that.
Yes.
Everyone's okay? Yes?
Wait till last minute.
Okay. It's okay?
Yes.
All ready? I don't think there's anything on the new business.
I actually had an item under unfinished business, if you don't mind. Just recently, we received the contract from the state, the Commonwealth Financing Authority. This is for the grant for the Stormwater Retention Basin at Melvin.
Yes.
As all of council knows, I'm not sure if the public knows this yet, but the borough was awarded a grant in the amount of $187,992. And we received the contract from the state that requires execution. Council's previously approved the project, so I don't know if you wanted to vote to direct us to execute the contract.
Yes.
We can't make any changes to it, even if we wanted to.
No, no, no.
But we have that ready for execution. Would you like to vote on that tonight or at Monday's meeting? We can add it to the agenda if you'd rather do it Monday.
If it's time sensitive and you'd like that tonight, we can do that tonight, and then we'll open public comment about it. It's up to you if it's okay for Monday to get it.
Yeah, we'll add it to the agenda for Monday.
I will say, that was a, that was a big win, that was a big push to get that. That was, MS4, when we have to do our program each year, we're required to do certain things by the DEP that are unfunded. And any small municipality that's designated as an MS4, unfortunately, you gotta pay that bill, and there's some big engineering costs to do that, you have no choice. So when we applied for this particular grant, I will say, and I have to give special thanks to Senator McElhaney and to State Rep. Marguerite Quinn, who worked very hard and contacted me ahead of time to watch that grant. And I asked them to please help if we could, that was unfunded for that. So I just personally want to appreciate them getting back to me and watching it and letting me know where we stood with that when it was being reviewed. So that was a big win for Marshville to get that money for that basin that does need to be taken care of and is part of our MS4 plan. Okay.
One other thing before you move off of unfinished business. We may have two items to add to your agenda for Monday regarding blight resolutions from the Planning Commission, but that meeting just happened last night and I haven't received them yet. So we will either add them for Monday, if for some reason council doesn't wish to act on them because they weren't ready for tonight, then we will postpone them until November's meeting.
Okay. I think that's, is that time sensitive on that also, or no?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Yeah, the sooner, I'm sorry, the sooner we work on it, the better.
Okay.
Comes to that. What we'll do is legally, we'll jump on that to the extent we have to.
Yeah, and you each step, it's like a 30-day process each time or something?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Anything else you want to add to that?
No, in terms of unfinished business, no. But I would like to remind council that you have an executive session scheduled for Monday evening at 6:00 PM here on labor contract negotiations.
Okay. So that'll be added to, let everyone know that also. Okay, is that it on that, then?
I have.
Okay. No new business. I guess we're at the Borough Officials, so if someone would like to say something at this particular time?
Yes, just real quickly, for the public's knowledge, Homecoming is this Friday, it's at the A Field, and the Bridge Commission has agreed to light up the Trent Makes Bridge blue and gold for our school's color. So if anybody can swing on by when the lights go out, or excuse me, when the sun goes down, they will see the Trent Makes the World Takes light up, lit up with our blue and gold colors, and then they can go to the A Field for the Homecoming game at 7 o'clock. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just to clarify on that, Corinne, it's 30 minutes before sunset, it starts till 11:00 PM for the sign.
Okay.
So if they can't make it before the game, it's there till 11:00 after.
She told me it was at sunset, so...
So we have to roll and run down to the bridge?
Well, that's good, we get to watch it all night long till 11:00.
Very nice.
Madam President?
Yes.
Nope. I have two things. I'm assuming everybody, I cringe a little bit at saying this, got my email regarding the camera proposal for Williamson Park. It was about $45,000. I know that's a hard thing to say right now with our budget talks coming up. Anybody have any questions on that?
I spoke with Mr. Nae about this, I think all of our parks need to have camera systems put in there, and especially with the fact that at some point, when we can redo Williamson Park and now putting new playground equipment, it's essential to put the camera system in there to, it also will help the police with surveillance, that would be able to help them along to see that stuff a little bit quicker. We already had talked about also, any of the parks we do, Patriots Park would be the same thing in that design, you definitely want to make sure that's incorporated in there, that there's a security system that at some point can be all tied in together to be able to go to the police department, so they're aware of all those different areas for more security. Our biggest problem is finding that funding. I think, I want to thank you for the amount of that program that you found. I know some of them are very expensive, so you went through the time to collect all that data. Our biggest problem is going to be finding what that is when we're already at crunch time here with what we can afford to do.
The other nice thing about the technology that's out there now is that this particular system has two 360-degree cameras working in tandem with a PTZ. So when one of those 360-degree cameras senses movement, it sends a signal to the PTZ to zoom in and focus on that, while at the same time, it can, we're talking about, you know, controlling our police costs, it can send a signal to an officer's cell phone or the MDT terminal on the vehicle. So no longer does it become necessary to have someone monitoring cameras. That's the bottom line here. So that's, that's potential savings, a system like this in the future.
Okay.
Grant?
You know, I think they didn't, I don't know, the police chief was looking for grants for different camera programs and it just not existing at the time. I don't know whether you've looked into any of that, or this company has.
Say, I'm definitely gonna keep my ear to the ground for grant money, because that looks like the only, the only option at this point.
Yeah, 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 because like I said, we'll, we'll see where we stand when we...
As I hit the mega millions and...
Yeah. We'll all hit the lottery to pay for it.
We're all good.
Yeah, but it's definitely a good program if we can find the money to do that. I definitely think we need a camera system in our parks, absolutely. And you had a second thing you wanted to speak about?
Yeah, I had a couple of questions on that before we moved on.
Okay, sure.
Does that include all setup, like running electricity to wherever the cameras would be?
Yes. The, if you noticed on the beginning of the proposal, they have what's called block time for sale, and all of, what they do is they sell you as part of the package, a specific amount of time. Now, that, the setup, that would be included in the installation, but the block time, if you ever need any maintenance or anything like that in the future, that would come out of that block time. One advantage to the block time is that you know for the year with pretty close proximity how much you're gonna spend on your... how much you're going to spend on your maintenance for your camera program. But to answer your question, yes, the proposal does include the installation.
Okay. And I apologize, it's been a couple of weeks since I read it. Is that $45,000, can you scale that at all so that maybe we could start with a couple little, you know, a camera here, a camera there, and then another year add it when, when we have finances, if we can find them?
Yeah, I think the situation with this program is that it's utilizing a wireless technology, which I've spoken about in the past. It's not so much the cameras, but you're installing the backbone for a larger system to expand on. So there are components that now need to be put in upfront that can handle that expansion in the future. So that pilot program, you know, is a jumping off point for a larger community-wide system.
So you're at the low price already?
It's, that's there, yep.
All right.
Yep. Any other questions?
What else?
Okay. The other email that I sent out today was regarding our Red Bridge project. I don't know if anybody has any questions. I was pleasantly shocked to find out that Home Depot is going to provide us with almost all materials for that at no charge. They even offered to provide volunteers to come and work, which we do, we do have several craftsmen from this community. One of them is here, Kurt.
Hello.
Okay. All right. Ed Tashawn, everybody knows him from the Little Fried Libraries. He's another one that has volunteered. Him and Kurt will really be the lead people on the, on the rebuild. But definitely, this is a great community project. I was very shocked to find out that we own the Red Bridge. I had intended to contact the state. They asked them to come make the needed repairs to the bridge, and she sent me back an agreement from 1933 indicating that it's ours.
It's all yours.
It's all yours.
All yours.
So, but the state is very agreeable. I know Councilman Bowers has made some recommendations on some rail height improvements and some ADA accessibility. The state has been very agreeable to all that. They've approved it. I met with our borough engineer, or I shouldn't say met with, I phone-conferenced with him Monday. He saw no reason for the project not to move forward. I had mentioned to him that we wanted to start in November. This allows us through December for any masonry work that has to be done. Also, yeah, the concrete is being donated, as well as we have a mason from town here that's going to be doing that type work. Anybody have any questions?
We had gone back and forth a little bit with the email, and you just had said that the engineer, which I had asked you to make sure that the manager was on board with all that, knew what was going on. Because of being in a state park, we have to comply with whatever DCNR-
Right.
...and the DNL allow us to do because of that. And as long as they're following along with that and the engineer's involved, just make sure that the council sees whatever that program is going to be when you put that together, it's what you're going to be doing, so everyone realizes.
That was pretty much in the email. That was, that was laid, that was laid out in the email today. That is the program.
Okay.
That is our plan. Mike, did you have?
I was going to ask Madam President a question.
Sure.
So just to make sure, though, it doesn't sound like there's any cost to the borough. It doesn't sound like, like we'll have anything to vote on. It's really just coordinating with the manager, correct?
Correct. The only, the only possible cost to the borough, and if Scott feels that it's too much of a burden, we may need the backhoe to lift out the beams so we're not painting over the canal basin. I mentioned that in the email, and possibly removal of some construction debris. You know, if that-
That's not a spending item, that's a usage of resources, right? Okay.
Right.
Okay. All right.
My only other suggestion is tape a sign up there at least a month in advance, tell people it's going to be closed. Because you will find some mad people get there, and we'll get mad if they have to walk all the way around.
There are a lot of, a lot of dog walkers and bicyclists over that bridge. That's why I think it's really a good project for, for November. You're in the least-used time of the year. The spring and summer are crazy down there, so.
You never know with this weather.
That's true. We might be in 80 or 90-degree weather come November. So, I don't know, Madam President, if you don't have an objection, could we add this to the agenda for next Monday for a vote?
I think there's nothing to vote for.
There's no vote?
Yeah, you're worried.
Or we can just go ahead and proceed and coordinate? Awesome.
Yeah, if there's something that comes up that's out of the ordinary, that we have to do a vote for, for some odd expenditure that the DCNR says, wait, we need something else done, or they don't approve, that, I said, keep us on board with what they come back with. You have to coordinate that with the engineer and with the manager. As the manager says, this needs to be voted by the council. We'll let you know that, and we'll add it to wherever that needs to be.
I would like-
I'm going to let the school board know, because I think a lot of kids use that bridge to go to school, so they'll have to find other ways to get to school.
I will, I will do that.
I would add a caveat to this, that we're going to have to make sure, in terms of liability, environmental inspections, et cetera, that the engineer and myself are kept informed as to the progress of this project.
Yeah, I already-
I mean, the, the bridge, yes, is borough property, but it's in a state park.
Right.
So I would think that, at the end of the day, probably DCNR is going to want to see and sign off on whatever the, whatever the plan is, whatever the staging area is going to be, what methods are going to be utilized to keep debris and anything else out of the-
Canal.
Canal.
Right.
So on and so forth, so.
For the environmental.
If, Kurt?
We're going to be doing all the prep off the canal. Painting of any of the wood, we're going to repaint everything off the canal.
That'll be in my backyard, actually.
Yeah.
Oh.
We don't want to get debris and anything in, in the water. That's why we need the backhoe to get the beams cut.
Right.
It's into the butt, and instead of sitting on a lip. We're going to get them out, brush them.
John's saying something back there.
Off now, and then reset again. Same thing with any of the railing. Decking doesn't get painted away, we leave that as it is. The railing will be, uh, quit.
Would you like to say something, John? No?
I'm hearing what you're saying.
Okay.
So, but yeah, absolutely, I will. I mean, going forward, certainly Scott and Kurt from Gilmore will always, will be included on every email that I exchange with the state on this. Also, I wanted to add that I know Kurt and Ed and myself are looking at this as a legacy project. I just want the public to know that we're expecting this, barring any man-made or natural disaster, for this project to outlive us by many, many, many years.
48.
Yeah, well.
48.
We have chosen White Oak for the, I don't know if anybody has any naval history, the ship that George Washington commissioned, the USS Constitution, was made out of oak, and it was also called Old Ironsides because the cannonballs used to bounce off the side. And it's almost nearly 100% waterproof in its natural state. We're also choosing all stainless steel hardware. So this is a quality legacy-type project going forward. I think the public will be very, very pleased in the fact that it's not costing the taxpayers any money. I'd be afraid to guess, if we had to put this out to bid through the bidding system, what this would cost. And, you know, we have the labor and materials being provided, so I'm very pleased with that.
Thank you, Dave.
Thank you.
Has the-
Great project.
Has the borough engineer agreed to do what they're going to do related to the project gratis?
Gratis. He's, he said he believes so. He's going to run that up the flagpole, but he didn't see that as an issue. He did say that he is very fond of Marshville Borough and, you know, appreciates all the work that we give them.
Good.
Okay. Anything else with that?
Nope.
Okay. The only thing I'm going to say during the public, I mean, the public, the borough official comments at this time is the, the chief. I've spoken with the chief, and if there's something that's public safety that the chief needs to come to the podium and actually talk about, he knows he can do that. He can request that and come there, especially if it has to do with that. The only thing we instructed him was, like any other department that turns in all the information to the manager, is the budget. So whatever his spending plan is, whatever adjustment he needs to make, as we're all making these adjustments, that's where he, he does that. In the administration area, it wasn't something he did at the podium. But if there's absolutely anything he needs to talk about on a public safety issue, that's where that would be. Purchasing his cars, what he needs to buy, that's strictly something that goes on the administration end of it. So usually, that's what happens during the budget time. And there's going to be a lot more meetings, I'm sure, between him and what he turns over to the manager, back and forth, Michael will be involved. This is, this is a whole different process than, we've had our budget before, I will tell you that. We've never run a budget that actually went on this kind of a timeline that I've been on council. It's been, let's, let's run this right up to the gauntlet, nobody knew what was going on, the numbers were fudged all over the place, you couldn't understand the thing. And then come days before it was voted by law, or you got fined, you had to get that across and then get your tax ordinance also voted. So you, you were literally, here, here it is, and just do it. So we're trying to get that process done so that, these are the raw figures, excuse me, these are the raw figures. This is, this is what was wrong, this is where we are, this is how bad it is, and how do we fix it?